Welcome to the zoning board of New York Fields meeting on this Thursday, October 22nd at 17:00. If you could please stand to pledge allegiance to their laws.
I'd like to lead this to the flag of the United States of America, to a republic where justice stands, one nation, united in all, liberty and justice for all.
I can't believe anybody even touched it.
No?
I don't think you touched it.
You guys okay?
Yeah. Yeah.
Wow.
So, I don't know if I can...
Yeah, well, at least this guy. Everything's fine. Yeah, we're good. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, oh.
It looks like it's getting shared to be here.
Wow.
A table just kind of fell. So, everyone's fine. All right, a couple announcements. If you want to make a comment, go in the public comment section as I've stated in previous meetings. Just make sure that you use the raised hands symbol and state your name and address. And then you have three minutes for comments. If, um, we just ask for your patience because obviously there was a little delay and things if there's anyone online. Our November meeting for the zoning board falls on Thanksgiving this year. So, we're moving the zoning board meeting to the week before, which would be Thursday, November 19th at 17:00. That does not fit with planning or the board meeting. So, that should be open on the calendar. Okay, next on the agenda is meeting minutes for September 24th, 2020. The board should have received those. Are there any comments, questions on them or modifications? Okay, is, if no comments, questions, modifications? Can I get a motion to approve the meeting minutes for September 24th, 2020?
I'll give that motion to approve the minutes as written for September 24th, 24th.
Madam, I'll second that motion.
Mr. Kari?
Yes.
Mr. Quilling?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mrs. Smaznow?
Yes.
Chairwoman Sodin?
Yes. Okay, probably can read better now, sorry. Okay, so next up is the public comment section and it is now open. If you have any comments, please raise your hand online or you can come up to the podium. And you have three minutes after you state your name and address. Yeah, okay, let me check online here. Okay, we do not have any online either. So, the public comment section is now closed. Save it 7:05. Just change to 7:05, okay. So, up next, we have the public hearing for the area variance at 11 Deerfield Place, which are Richard and Denise Swalen, 190.15-2-70. So, this is a public hearing for the area variance to construct a 14 by 25-foot carport at 11 Deerfield Place. They are seeking a five-foot side setback relief from the 10-foot permitted. And that would be a five-foot side setback. So, I'd like to give, Denise, you want to speak at all in regards to it? Anything further you'd like to state? I know that you kind of stood before, so.
Yep, I just had a couple neighbors come over to the house today, too. They were looking to see, you know, where it was. And this was the neighbor that was on the opposite side over where our septic system is. So, you know, he pretty much knew where it was and everything. And he was fine with it. I asked him if he had any comments, if he wanted to come tonight. He said he's completely fine. And he apologized for mowing over on my lawn. And then our two neighbors across the street talked to my husband and they saw everything. They know where everything's going. Ours driveway's on a hill, so even if they're down on the road, they really can't see up and over to where it's going to be.
Okay.
And then I think I've had two other people on the side saying they definitely approve and they're okay. And so, I hope everybody's okay.
All right, very good. All right. I did get, I did get two emails from neighbors, so I will read those to the, hold up here. And let's see here. All right, this is from the neighbor at 15 Deerfield Place. I have added a hard copy to the physical file. That's what she wrote. Let's see. Hi, I live at 15 Deerfield Place, Boston, Spahn, New York. I have no objections to the erection of a carport at 11 Deerfield Place, Boston, Spahn, New York. The property appears large enough to accommodate a carport without having a negative impact on the environment or the appearance of the neighborhood. Okay, so that was 15 Deerfield. And then I received another one from 13 Deerfield Place. We reside at 13 Deerfield Place, Boston, Spahn, New York. And this is Holly Hayes and Daryl.
Person?
Person, yes.
All right. And it says, quote unquote, "Grant approval." For the carport at 11 Deerfield Place. So, that gave me a little smile. Okay, would anyone from the public like to speak in regards to this? Yes, please.
Next, Stevens, 13 Wickletree Road. And I can speak for myself and our neighbors who also got no indication of it. It fits the neighborhood and a lot of, there's how many other carports on that street already? Three or four? Three or four at least. I know there's at least one across the street because my husband helped build it years ago. So, it fits the character of the neighborhood and everybody seems fine in my neighborhood about it, so.
Thank you. Any other, um, from the public? Can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, Jerry?
One more, just one second.
Okay. Eric, please, second.
There we go. I make a motion, we close. Jerry, you want a second?
Second.
There you go.
Mr. Kari?
Yes.
Mr. Quilling?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Smaznow?
Yes.
Chairwoman Sodin?
Yes.
Okay, does the board have any additional questions or comments in regards to this, this action report? Okay. If there are no additional questions or comments, I'd like to get a motion to approve the area variance for the addition as stated in the application for 11 Deerfield Place, Boston, Spahn.
I'll make the motion to approve the variance for 11 Deerfield Place.
Second.
Mr. Kari?
Yes.
Mr. Quilling?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Smaznow?
Yes.
Chairwoman Sodin?
Yes. And just to be, just to be a little bit more specific, it is a relief of five feet. So, it's five feet granted, okay? So, that's what will go in the resolution. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have a continued review of the area variance application for sticks and stones. Holding Stuart Thomas, 1073 Middle Line Road, 176.1-1-23.2. All right, so as stated in our September zoning board meetings, an area variance for the new residential construction in a lot that's less than five acres in the R2 district. There are five adjoining properties that are also less than the five acres. These lots were created prior to the zoning changes and require, requiring a five-acre minimum per lot in the R2 district. So, just to recap kind of what happened last meeting and what has transpired since. On the property, there are headstones that go back to 1797. Ms. Salters stated as the chairperson of the Historic Structures Committee, those should be protected. In addition, the code mentions that there shall be a 50-foot distance from the cemetery to the nearest building and that it provides a fence. The committee also recommended a three-foot easement off Circle C Road to the cemetery for people to visit the cemetery. Mr. Thomas stated that he believes that the area is just grave markers or on private land, not a cemetery. The zoning board stated that it is in the town's best interest to preserve historical sites. Mr. Henry also pointed out the definition of cemetery as defined under section 291 of the town law, which doesn't differentiate between municipal cemetery and grave markings. It also states a place for the interment, so quote unquote, "A place for the interment of the dead or in which human bodies have been buried." And it goes on, it's a little more lengthy than that. I'm just quoting a partial on that. Mr. Lewis further stated that Mr. Thomas has a pre-existing lot of record and it's, I believe, a double-wide on that property there. So, it's an existing structure on it and it can be fixed up if he chooses to do so. But he can't build new construction without the zoning board approval. I propose that we keep this on the agenda for this month and have the applicant talk to his partner, since he is in a partnership in this, this construction company, and talk to State Historic Preservation Office, which is called SHPO, and see what they have to say in regards to the situation and how to proceed forward. So, at this, at this point, I'd like to hear from Mr. Thomas what the status of those items are that we asked him to look into and if we can just kind of get an update for that. Okay, I'm going to allow him to talk, so, all right. I think I have to put it next door, is that right? Does everyone hear that? All right. If you could just speak up a little bit, I will, I will put my, my sound all the way up for you. And hopefully that helps.
Hello.
Okay. Does that sound better? Okay, yes, go ahead.
Well, the current update is that we retained an attorney, Mr. Sutton, to look into the matter about the grave markers. We fulfill the town, on my understanding of the town, rules by doing a plot plan, which you have also, I don't know if you can show that or put that up. Maybe it would be helpful if they actually saw the plot plan.
Okay, let me bring that up, okay?
So, as you can see, I have a proposed, a plot plan proposal. I'm not building anything. I simply re-sell that lot to someone who I suspect would build something. The little reading marks, I guess there are, are the grave markers. And we have taken the three closest ones to a proposed house, not that it has to be there or not. And we measured more than 50 feet from each one to where we would propose the house will be, as well as more than 100 feet from the current well. So, that could be utilized if necessary. And then propose something below that. My understanding is that we're asking for an area variance of 1.986 of an acre. We don't need any side backs, side setbacks. And, you know, we retain Mr. Sutton to figure out what exactly the grave markers are going to have to do with this. To me, I don't understand at all how these two issues are tied together for an area variance. We've been trying to be cooperative. I have not heard from Karen from the last meeting. And Mr. Sutton told me that he was going to reach out to Karen to find out what the issue is. This plot plan shows clearly that we're trying to follow the laws and the septic code of the town and also be respectful of the grave markers that are there now. So, I'm a little confused why there's two different issues.
Okay.
I have a question for the applicant. The board asked you to...
Go ahead, Mr. Quilling.
Madam Chair, the board had asked you to check with SHPO. And I was wondering what you found out when you checked with them?
I turned all that over to Mr. Sutton and he's handling that end of it. I understand that you have concerns about that, but I'm not sure if that can't be a continuing conversation versus granting me my variance as I've tried to fulfill what's been outlined to me in terms of that area variance. So, I don't have a problem further discussion on that, but I'm hoping for the area variance.
Now, what is the, and in that plot plan, it showed about 52 feet, 53 feet to the property from some of those grave markers. What is the area of disturbance around that? Like, how close would you actually come with the disturbance to those grave markers?
Well, how do you check the bill? Your plan is to be that you have to be 50 feet, a structure has to be at least 50 feet. Since this is a proposed plot plan, it's not something that's going to happen. It would be under any bill's auspices to look at any proposed building application to decide on what disturbance and all that stuff will be. I mean, that's something that someone else is going to do with Bill.
Okay, I understood.
And it's a big enough plot, it's, it doesn't have to be where it is. In fact, it may move to the left or back, or whatever. I have no decision process for that.
Yeah, Madam Chair? Yeah, Madam Chair, the applicant, again, is asking for the 1.982 acre relief for the density of area variance for the property. The gravestones, obviously, is something when he submits a building permit application with a site plan, that he would have to locate those on the site plan he's submitting with the building plan. It shows a proposed building area. And it would be our job to make sure that he's a minimum of 50 feet in any part of the structure from any of the gravestones.
Okay, okay. All right, and it's just a further, a further update since our last meeting. In parallel, Mr. Henry reached out to SHPO. And Jessica Schreier is the point of contact for Saratoga County. And Ms. Schreier stated that she would be willing to review and comment on the application. And after talking with Mr. Henry, I did give my approval for them to move forward to, to look at that and to comment on that. And it was the recommendation of Mr. Henry and also talking to Jim Craig, our town board council, that we need to hear back from SHPO in regards to the comments and feedback before we proceed with this variance, as it is in the best interest of the, of the town to consider all factors. And this is, this is one factor that, that we have to address prior to, to moving forward on it. So, it's like Mr. Thomas wants to speak here. Let me, that offers maybe.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, who was the person at SHPO?
Jessica Schreier. She is the, the actual point of contact for Saratoga County. So, she would hear everything pertaining to Saratoga County.
So, my question is this. Since there's no building applications submitted, okay? And I've hired an attorney to work something out with you guys. Why can't we get the area variance approved since the two things are separate? I, I have no problem with figuring this out, but on the other hand, I'm not putting in any building application. And as Bill said, I think that's when this comes to light more than anything. And we can try to see what's legally possible, I don't know.
The first deficiency in your plan is that you failed to depict and measure the distance between at least two different burial sites on the site. Beyond that, I think that, and there may be four, as I look at it, that don't have distances. And while you may say, well, they all exceed 50 feet, I think what you're hearing from the board is that they're sensitive to the historical significance. And that is, first, they want to know how many burial sites are there. And then beyond that, and as you appreciate, that's not necessarily headstones. But also beyond that, there's a question as to the duration of time that this has been used by a burial site. There's a question as to whether or not there are other burial sites that may be more proximate to the proposed house that you depicted of 2,500 feet. And I'm sure you also appreciate the fact that this board is sensitive to not granting relief, to only create an impossible condition for an applicant when they go to Mr. Lewis seeking a building permit. You've stated to the board that your intent is to use this for a single-family residence. And so, the board can't be myopic in the manner that you've suggested and just look at it in a vacuum. But the board has to look at it in total. In the end, it's my understanding that the town has not had access to this property for some considerable time. And actually, I believe the cemetery committee has been denied access, affirmatively denied access over some period of time. And finally, you were directed to contact SHPO at the last meeting. And what the board learned is that you did not do that. So, the board, I think, is well within its province, as the chair has indicated, to first learn from the state what exactly the historical significance may be from the state's perspective and then ultimately from the town's perspective.
Thank you, Bill. Yeah, and you know, you know, you make a good point, Mr. Thomas. Now that you have an attorney, Mr. Henry and Mr. Sutton can work, work some items out. However, this is in our purview and this, this is of interest in this application. So, we want to follow back up on this application on our November meeting on the 19th, once we've received additional information from, from SHPO on this. So, that's how we're going to, to proceed on, on this application at this point in time.
I would like permission to void into an inventory of the stones that, that we believe that are there from Mr. Thomas, if that is acceptable to them. And Mr. Henry, is, would that be okay for us to do?
That, that would be the obligation of the applicant to provide that affirmative consent. But I think from the town's perspective, the, the town, I think, would like to have the benefit of that effort and that work if it's undertaken. But I think it has to be consent from the applicant.
Is that something that you could work with Mr. Sutton on or should we go directly with the chance?
I'd be happy to work with Mr. Sutton on it, but it could be asked right now.
Whenever, this could, I just need to know the when.
That's a good question.
It's okay. So, that'll be that. Thank you.
Well, just to answer a couple things that Bill said, I do have an attorney who worked that out. I never said I didn't contact SHPO. So, that's just to make it clear. The other thing is, I know he's a busy guy, but Karen has been very nice and smitten a lot of information about this property. One was a, a book excerpt from Ken, I think, playing or something like that. And so, the information is very well documented. The problem also, which the board has to figure out what they want to do, is as in the plot plan, that's a proposed, how many feet away, I don't think matters on a proposal. You guys have set your rules of 50 feet away. You guys want to change it, that's up to you guys. I don't really carry the weight, does a magnet all measure or not? Because it's not real. The, the problem here that I'm looking at is that there's two and a half grave markers on someone else's property. And so, respectfully for those there, I don't know what that has to do with it. How do I handle the one that's on the property line? And the other two, it's, it's not just a simple, what do you want to do kind of thing. And I don't have permission to allow you guys inventory of someone else's property. That's not it. But there is a clear inventory of who's there. And so, I'm not too concerned about it, about there being other people.
Okay, so as far as your property goes and the, the grave markers on your, your property, are you giving consent for Karen and her committee to, to inventory those? Or is that, is that a no at this, this point?
That's something that my attorney has to figure out. And I think Bill and Ken will work together and figure out what needs to be done and how it should be done. But also, it's a little treacherous because there's about eight or 10-foot-high sandbank that they have to climb up and down to access it from Circle C. So, and also, there's a lot of downed trees. So, it's very treacherous back there. And I would be concerned about anybody going back there. Like, I don't have, I don't have insurance that will cover that. So, that's one of the other issues. But sure, this can be worked out with the usual charges.
Okay, all right. We will definitely connect the two of them to do that, that's.
That sounds good.
Okay. Okay, so we will have this on the agenda for our next meeting on November 19th, where we will hear some more from, from SHPO and their comments on that. Okay. Next on the agenda is the continuation of a public hearing. Next on the agenda is the continuation of a public hearing for the area variance of Active Solar 434 Sodeman Road, 163-1-56.11. We're dismissing Mr. Henry. Jim, do you want to come up?
Wherever you want me.
Come on up. Jim Craig will be representing our council for, for this action if there's a conflict. Okay. So the planning board that last night in regards to the seeker for this, it was issued a negative declaration, so we will, since it's a coordinated review, we're able to move forward on this from our, from our perspective on it. So the public hearing, as you know, was left open from our last meeting in September so that we could kind of work through some of the things, wait for the seeker to come through and that sort of thing. Are there any, since the public hearing is open, are there any additional comments, questions for any folks? All right. So if there's no additional comments for the, the public comment, I'd like to have a motion to close the public hearing.
Make that motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Eric.
One second, Bill.
Mr. Kari?
Yes.
Mr. Quilling?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Smaznow?
Yes.
Chairwoman Sodin?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Does the board have any additional comments or questions from, from what we've heard? Does the applicant want to speak in regards to this? Do you have anything additional need to add?
Nothing has changed, the design has not changed.
Okay. Okay. Any questions, comments from the board? Okay, Eric.
Can't you hear me? I went through the, the reclamation, you know, the, the, the numbers and...
I'm going to move up to the podium in a second, respond to you if that's all right.
Yes, please.
Yeah. The, there's, there's some estimates, I guess, you know, the reclamation.
Are you, are you talking about decommission?
Yes, decommission, those numbers. And the only thing that I'm concerned about, and, you know, and I know it's good faith effort, I believe the numbers, okay, but it's...
Hitting.
No, I'm not trying to hit at all. I'm wondering if there's some sort of insurance policy or, you know, I don't even think, you know, I don't, I don't think it's like a bond kind of thing, but something that if there's, especially since after you build it, it's going to be transferred to someone else most likely, that there's something put in place so that if those numbers don't end up being close, that the town's not going to be responsible. Does that make any sense?
Yeah. So if you, you look through the, the numbers...
Yeah. Well, I saw there was a lot of estimates and there was a lot of deductions.
Well, there's actually...
Stuff like that you work.
A lot, we took the recycling value and threw it out the window, right? It depended and, and so that's almost some coverage for you. You know, it's, it's primarily aluminum, glass, silicon, the racking steel, then you have copper wire in the ground and, and a lot of copper linings on transformers and things like that. So the expensive part is pulling the stuff, the, the concrete pads out. So as we look, you know, that we're, we're putting up, we either put up a bond or we put up a, a, a letter of credit or, or we, in this case, we're putting up the money. So the money's, I think last time we did an interest-bearing account, the money actually gets bigger as we do it. You guys have control, or I should say you, but the town has control of that interest-bearing account, of that interest-bearing accounts or...
Like I said...
Yeah. So, so I don't know of any insurance for decommissioning beyond that, you know, if you want to, you know, and I guess I've communicated this to the planning board, but if you think that the amount is insufficient, what type of discussion?
I don't know.
Yeah. But, but I don't know that that product exists.
I saw estimates and I said, you know, 25 years from now, but what made me think of it is I bought, bought my house in 81 and we had a survey done and it was 1,300 bucks.
Sure.
And now we're selling on development rights, so they got to do another survey and it's seven grand.
Yeah.
And I was like, really?
So I guess as you think your way through that, what's aluminum going to do with it?
Exactly.
Yeah. So, so those are one, one thing, I would say. The other thing is, think about the fact that you have an operating asset. It's like going in the oil well, you're not going to, it's an operating asset, right? So it's always going to generate kilowatt hours and, and nobody's going to just abandon it. You know, there's, there's banks behind it that are...
Or...
There, you know, even though we've got a 25-year lease on the property, the, the actual asset performance is 40 years, meaning it's got a useful life, but you know this because you have solar yourself. So it's still going to generate kilowatt hours, so nobody's going to want to abandon that, so to speak. So yes, town dust is for decommissioning and we understand it, but as we look at it from a practical point, that asset is like abandoning an oil well or what, what have you, you know, you don't abandon a functioning rental property, so...
All I'm saying is, is that, and this is probably more a planning work, but I want, you know, I knew that, but, you know, you have to comment, so I just...
So happy to have the discussion, you know...
Yeah. I mean, it's something that, you know, they should all know.
Yeah.
But, you know, to me, it's, it's, when I look at the data, you know, if it was a business thing, that would be, to me, something I would be asking.
We can touch base with Mr. Barzo.
Yes. Thank you, Doctor.
Anything else want to add?
Any other questions? Comments?
Thank you.
Yes. If there are no additional questions or comments, I would like to get a motion to approve the variance for the addition as stated in the application for Active Solar 434 Sodeman Road. Okay.
Second.
Madam Chair. Mr. Kari?
Yes.
Mr. Quilling?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Smaznow?
Yes.
Chairwoman Sodin?
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hope they're getting over a signed copy for, kind of, the resolution. Okay. Next up, other announcements that are being, there's none, I kind of front loaded them, so we've got none there. Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting, please?
Make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
Correct.
Thank you all for coming.